Good afternoon. I hereby call this agenda review meeting of the Nicholas ISD Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a form is present and notice this meeting was legally posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. I'd like to remind everyone that all items on the agenda today are for discussion only. No action will be taken at this meeting. Please join us in turning off cell phones to silent. We do not have anyone raised your to speak. The board will move to consent agenda, item number one. We discuss now items from the consent agenda. And items to consider agenda will, board you have minutes? My board reports. Ms. Barbara, can you? We're ready.
Good afternoon, President Neal, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. I'd like to begin with the budget amendments. And... I don't know if it will help you to say what page or not. Page fourteen?
Fourteen.
Mr. Neal, you may explain. We may be bumbling a little bit today.
To our audience, we, our software has been updated. And we're learning again how to maneuver through the scheme. It looks awesome. It's gonna be really great once we learn the process and there are all the things that are there. So we may be bumbling a little bit up here, back and forth, and catching up with each other. We've all been practicing a little bit at home, and we all practice at different levels. So we're close. Ms. Fish, thank you. You're absolutely correct.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barbara.
All right, the first budget amendment is to budget funds that we've received for athletic playoff games. And so that's the revenue and the associated expenses. Budget, item B. We have hired a part-time maintenance clerk that will be employed during the bond process to help out maintenance with their extra workload. So that's what this is for. Okay, there's a page two. Trying to figure out how to get to.
Just scroll down.
Okay, here we go. Okay. Okay, and item C. Nettie Marshall has, for several years, has had an aide as their librarian. And they actually have a certified librarian this year, and so I'm increasing the budget to pay for that certified librarian rather than an aide.
Great.
Wonderful. That's always exciting when we see.
Yes, and it...
Getting another librarian.
Yeah, it hasn't been for lack of trying.
Right, and I know it's been a hard, hard to recruit librarians, so excellent.
So any questions on budget amendments?
Board, any questions on budget amendments? Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
I'd like to move on to donations under $2,500. And you have your listing there. Donations were made to Nettie Marshall as well as Athletics Department.
You know, the only comment I would make, we have such a great community. We appreciate the support of our community, continue to support our schools, and donations to different departments. So thank you, community, for your commitment to our students. Thank you.
All right, and then the investment report. There's nothing unusual there, just our earnings that we have been receiving each and every month. One thing to note there is interest rates are continuing to decline, which means our investment earnings will decline. Any questions on the investment report?
Thank you.
So we're still making money?
Yes, we are. And the rest is just our miscellaneous business office reports. If you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
I had two questions.
Okay.
On the new, on the new board book on page, on the page two of that, it's, uh... There was a audit services for nine thousand, and I just don't recognize that. Probably, we've already talked about that, but I just wanted to say, what audit was that?
What, what report are you looking at?
It's the check register by vendor.
Okay.
It's, uh, let me put on my glasses.
Who is the vendor? That might help.
Let me make it big. Belt, Harris, and Pichak?
That's our final payment on our independent audit we have every year.
Okay, okay, that's the final payment. Okay, so that's not a recurring thing, but it's, every time we do a big audit, this is just a, the final bill of it?
We have an audit every year, and they, they send us bills as it progresses, and then when it's complete, then we send them.
So this is not the complete amount, this is just the residual?
That was just the final payment, no.
Okay, all right, and then there was another thing on, there was another question I had, and I think we went over this last year, but I figured it'd be better for me. It's on page nine of that, and it was dealing with Region Five and Region Seven. Because, like, we have a bunch of bills for Region Seven. So we have seven thousand, one thousand, four thousand, and then nine hundred. Is that like for different schools, different people?
That's, those are district-wide bills. Region Five, I believe, is our co-op payment for food service.
Okay.
Region Seven, we have many, they provide a lot of services, different services for us.
And so is this a once-a-year thing, or is this a recurring?
They bill, I believe, it's three times, or quarterly.
Quarterly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and now, that's what also gives us, that's not the board book, or the buy, the buy program that we have, that's, that's independent from the Region Seven? Where we're, we're buying stuff on a, like a board book buy or something like that?
Well, we do have a, Region Seven does have a co-op as well.
Through this money, we have access to another place to buy at a cheaper price, so we can compare where's the cheapest to buy.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to understand. Great, thanks.
Board, any more questions, ma'am?
I have one, Mr. Neal. It, it kind of relates back to the, it's the new positions and salary adjustments. I know we just approved the, or we're in the process of looking at the budget amendment. The note on that says that that part-time clerk position is just through the end of the bond, correct?
That's correct.
And, but it is funded with local funds, not bond funds. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's correct. We were chosen to not use bond funds to pay for that.
Good, I, I agree with that. I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting it correctly. Thank you, ma'am.
And then a follow-up on that question. The funds that we'll be using for that position, once that position is over, there won't be any more funds to hire any part-time? Is that, is that my understanding?
That's correct. This position is only to be used up until we finish the bond.
Okay. Thank you, board. Any other questions? Ms. Barbara?
That finishes mine.
Mr. Mike Owens purchases, like, on the technology?
Good afternoon, President Neal, board members, interim superintendent Fraley. If you look on three C, purchase over $25,000, item three C one, on page eighty-two.
Yes, sir.
This is our annual Microsoft licensing for the campus. It's, covers Windows, Office 365. We renew this every year. We pay per employee, but then they include all the labs and student use is free. Microsoft throws that in as part of the education package. And so we're looking at $41,211.92. And do you have any questions?
Does this, does this increase every year for Microsoft?
No, it was actually the same this year. In fact, it went down just a little bit this year, but we, it will increase next year more than likely because I need to update the number of employees. We're a little bit low right now, but they said not to worry about it. We will adjust it next year.
I'm not sure if it was here, but there was something about six or seven hundred computers. Is that about how many computers this is covering? Or what's the total number of computers this covers?
Six hundred and thirty-six is the number that they sold us, but it's actually a true site license. So even though we may have more than that, and that's why I say next year we need to adjust it, but the Microsoft representative said this was good for this year.
Okay.
And we will work on adjusting it.
So it covers everything, and we're not going to be seeing this again this year?
No, not this year, no, sir. And we may, if it comes out cheaper, I may come to you and ask for a three-year contract next year. We're gonna look that over, too.
And the number of employees, are, are those all of the employees within ISD?
All employees that use a computer.
Okay.
Board, any other questions? Mr. Owens, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item D, board. Consideration of the high school course catalog, including new courses, exciting. Offer high school credit. Dr. Hill, we'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Good afternoon, President Neal, interim superintendent Fraley, and board of trustees. Thank you very much for the opportunity. This is an annual approval. And so we have updated the course catalog for the 2021 school year, which is your first attachment, and then the second attachment is the potential new courses for high school credit. You'll notice on that particular listing, there is one course that's listed at the very bottom that has an asterisk, that we're looking at offering at our middle school, or on the middle school campuses. And so that's why it's kind of generically phrased, courses recommended for high school credit, rather than delineating, right, at either campus.
Thank you. Board, any questions? Go ahead, please.
I do have a couple. I'll start by saying I was super excited to see the addition of, of classes. I think I was particularly excited about the new EMT Basic that is gonna be offered. What a fantastic opportunity for our CTE program. One thing that did kind of surprise me was the replacement for welding one and welding two. Can we talk a little bit more about that? Because I know welding is a, has been identified by our local economic development corporation as a high-need area. So was kind of surprised to see that we were looking at kind of phasing out those two welding classes.
May I get Mr. Hasley to the podium to clarify?
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. We're really not phasing out, oh.
Sorry, Mr. Hasley.
We're really not phasing out weld, welding one or welding two. We're just changing the names. With the advent of House Bill Three and programs of study that come through with our Perkins Five Grant, in order for us to spend federal money on certain programs, they have to fulfill this programs of study coherent sequence. And the way welding fit, it was more along the lines of manufacturing as opposed to ag where it currently is located. And a lot of our kids are ag kids, and with FFA rules and being able to be an FFA officer and those sort of things, what the FFA bylaws say and what the FFA people say are two different things. So the best thing for us to do is just change the name of those two courses that are basically same teach-wise, and just keep fulfilling it that way.
Okay, all right. So they will still have exposure to some basics?
Same teachers, same, the same stuff that we're doing.
Kind of prep them so that if they, if it's something that they have an inclination to, they'd be ready to roll right into a welding program at a junior college?
Yes, ma'am. Our, our two certifications that we're currently doing in welding are still gonna be taken care of in these two courses.
Okay.
And they're still offered for the same amount of hours and things of that nature.
All right, thank you, sir.
Can you tell me about that, the EMT class? What are they gonna come out with after they take that class?
I believe it's basic EMT, and we're also looking at an EK- I believe it's basic EMT, and we're also looking at an EKG certification. It's, the way it works is that they need just a little bit more than two-hour classes, just a hair longer than a semester, so that's why we came in with an EKG certification as well. So we're all, we're still putting the process of putting this together. I just want to be prepared that once we got all our ducks in a row, that you guys were well aware of everything, and we could have kids go ahead and sign up for it, and that way we'd be able to do it this next year. And it would add, that's two more certifications in our health science, as well as, this one doesn't necessarily require you to have gone through the entire health science field. If you become a junior or senior, you've already done something else with an endorsement, but you have, you know, passed biology and things of that nature. This may be something that interests you, so you're, you're not locked out of a potential career, so it was an opportunity for us to open the door for more kids.
And do you already have somebody on board? Are we in?
We're in conversations with an East Texas group that, that specializes in certifications, and they will show up, they'll show up and, and do the two-hour, once every two weeks, training and things of that nature, it'll be live, hands-on stuff.
Is there a possibility those students, EMT classes, travel with their ambulances and for learning process?
Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I think there are, there is some live time where they'll be able to do that sort of thing. But like I said, we're still in the conversation mode of just exactly what all they're going to get to do. I just know that we're going to, we're going to provide everything we can.
I recall the same scenario came up a few years ago, and I was sitting over there, and the board members had opposition to students travel at a younger age and see the tragic sights. I leave a profound impression on them.
Yeah, and this, and this, look, this course is, is for seniors, so it'd be a little bit, you know, you'd be able to keep the, the age requirement to, to senior level, seventeen, eighteen-year-old students. But like I said, as far as the actual drive time, live time, I'm not sure exactly what they'll be able to do with that. They'll be in ambulances as far as live ambulances. I'm, I'm not so sure about that.
Go ahead.
Is there some thought about expanding that EMT to like a more advanced certificate, rather than just a basic certificate?
Yes, sir. The, the whole thing was, was we wanted to get our, we wanted, we wanted to expand the health sciences with more certifications, and then we're going to grow those certifications from there. Yes, sir.
What I like about that, though, is once they get that basic, and I believe they are required to do X number of hours in order to get that basic certification. But as a senior, then literally when they graduate, they, they're employable, they can get a job, and then as they're working, continue to work toward the advanced in the paramedic and stuff. So it really gives them a great foundation. That's very exciting.
Yeah, we're, we're excited about it.
We, we want to say as a board, any other questions, Board?
I, I don't want to leave out, I don't know that Ms. Autry is here with Advanced Academics, but we've talked a lot about CTE. I know we're, we're very proud of those changes, but I'm extremely excited about the addition of, of the AP classes that, there are pre-AP classes as well, so I don't want to leave academic side out.
You know, Dr. Crespo and to your staff, thank you for, as we move forward, and really appreciate the description, you know, as Mrs. Finch mentioned of the welding, and that's so important to our community, and our students have an opportunity. The description also describes that there'll still be entry-level welding application available, and so in that, in that particular course, and I think that's important. As a matter of fact, how will our parents and students receive this information, the, the catalog? Will that be available through, how is that disseminated? I'm sorry, putting you on the spot there.
So we will send out communication online, through email, through my weekly parent newsletter with a link to it as well. Our counselors are visiting middle schools at, starting today, and so they're giving them information as well, and where to find the, the catalog once it is available. We, we're also going to do a, a kind of an elective fair for our high school students, because a lot of times they get bypassed, and the junior high kids get a lot of information, and we're expecting our high school students to kind of know everything already, but a lot of them don't know everything when they started, so we kind of remind them about the opportunities that are available through that elective fair, so they can see other courses they may be interested in, and maybe want to change some of the courses they may have thought they were going to take, because now they have interest in something else, so they'll have that availability. But we'll, we'll send that out. We'll give the parents the link. We'll have that available. We'll have some hard copies on campus as well for when parents come up, but they'll also have access to it online.
We will also have a trace.
I wanted to say that just the, the way it looks, it's crisp, clean, it's, has some nice illustrations and colors, and I think that that was well done. And so you get the praise, just like when you get the bad news.
I'll give Dr. Kuschikoff a little praise here, since he kind of designed it, after we, we talked about what we wanted in it, and he, he did the, the magic on the design.
It's, it's very readable. It's very readable. It looks attractive. I think it's very enticing to our students to pick, I want this, I want that. It's, 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 it's great grocery shopping for your education.
Thank you.
Dr. Crespo, I have a couple of questions from my own information. If a student's taking AP or pre-AP classes, and in danger of failing, we remove that student to a lower?
That is correct. Now, previously, we did not have anything concrete written in the procedures of how we handle students that are struggling. So we had students that were staying in those courses all year, lowering their GPA, and so what we did this year, we established procedures. If a student is below a seventy-five, then they are going to have procedures in place with their teachers on how to improve those grades, through mandatory tutorials coming in during ISP before or after school, and then other, other assignments that they'll need to do to improve their grades. If they are failing at semester, then they will be removed.
Okay.
If they're failing at a grading period, then they will be recommended to move to a non-level course, but they will give, be given an opportunity to improve that score. But at semester, if they are at a failing grade, then they'll be removed to a non-level course, and we want them to succeed.
If they transfer to the next level down, their existing grade would be multiplied by one point one, or just would be the raw grade that she already earned?
If they transfer to the next level?
Yes.
And so it's still pre-AP or AP? It's the one point one for pre-AP and AP at this point? Now, we, we've talked about other things that we'll discuss in the future, but right now it's still the one point one, yes.
Okay. Next question I have is that students who are taking courses with a professor at SFA, and professor gives a grade to our counselors. Those grades are numerical or letter grades?
They are numerical. Their, their range at SFA is a little bit different than ours, and so it's numerical for us. But it'll, it'll average into a letter grade, and so we'll, we'll do the equivalent of that grade at the high school level. So whatever a D is over at SFA, you know, we'll calculate it into what we have as a D, so it's a little bit different. I think it's maybe five or six points difference.
As we go forward, if there is dual-credit classes we taught at, at high school, with a high school teacher, at the same time, teacher will report the grade to SFA for their dual?
Yes, yes, and that, and that is our goal. We have a couple of courses right now that some SFA professors and Angelina professors come to the campus to teach, because we don't have a teacher for that course, but my goal next year is to any, you know, most dual-credit courses will be taught on campus by our teachers, because they understand our procedures, our kids. We've had some, some struggles with some professors. They wanted to, to keep things a certain way, and our kids just aren't used to that, that format yet, and so we're trying to work with some of our teachers to obtain those employment with SFA, so they can also, also teach it on campus specifically.
The grade that we send SFA from high school, for example, if making eighty-two versus eighty-nine, does it make any difference, or we just turn in B?
It is, it is a B in, in our scheme, but we have to follow the SFA guideline on their, on their particular, on the way they have their, their letter grades divided up.
For our own high school during the graduation, would be any conflict between class ranking?
It could. It could. I mean, most kids take the dual-credit at this point, you know, to increase their GPA, to help their ranking status. So most of them, you know, are very, very structured on how they do things and are successful in those courses. We have a few that we've been working with, with SFA. They made a change on policy recently with dual-credit. Usually if it was, if student didn't maintain a two-point-oh or better, then they were removed completely from the dual-credit program. And they, SFA has changed it to if only the course that the kid has struggled in, they have to be removed from that course, where they can continue with the courses that they are successful in. Now, they didn't tell us that in the beginning. They told the parents before they told us, so we've had to make some adjustments, and so kids were able to continue on those dual-credit courses that they have been successful in.
That's good. So if you're successful in math, but maybe struggle in English, you can still pursue math?
Correct. And previously it was if you, you were not successful in one course, then you were removed from all courses. So at that point, you're dealing with students that now are feeling that, you know, unsuccessful, I can't do this, or now they think, I can't get my credit, you know, and then, you know, that just changes morale. So now they're having an opportunity to continue in those courses that they are successful with. And that's something that, I said, we don't do that at the high school level with the high school courses. If they mess up on one course, well, that's the course that we're going to work on. It doesn't affect their other courses.
Nice.
My final question is, if there's a distance learning, the professor gives a major test, then at the same time, high school give a daily test, and they're combined become the final grade. Am I correct?
If the high school offers?
No, sir. It's a distance learning.
Okay, so they're, they're going through SFA.
And also there is a, teachers also give them daily grade, correct?
No. If there, if there's a distance learning, then they're working on what that professor is, is giving them. We don't, we don't have a teacher on campus that does something different with that student. Now, there are days that the course is offered through SFA, and then the other two days are generally used as a study hall. That is if it is taught by the professor at the campus. And so here on, on campus, we, we work every day. We don't have a study hall day.
Okay, what I read, it says student learning via distance learning with the NHS teacher as a co-teacher.
That's one course right now. I know that. That's a calculus course.
The teacher administered daily grade plus the major test that the professor gives would be their grades, correct?
Right.
Okay, which one has more weight, daily teacher or professor who teaches on a?
They're, they're giving the students exactly what the professor is, is offering them. They're not giving them something separate.
Very good.
Yes.
The reason I ask these questions, because in the past, when the grade point averages come out, there's so much controversy, then there was a committee to have to go sit down and listen. I was one of them, and I, I was lost, so I'm educating myself in case it comes up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Crespo. Thank you, staff.
You're taking us in a really exciting direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, our next item on the agenda is proclamation of a list of instructions and materials adopted by the State Board of Education. Dr. Hill, if you would, please.
So this year for proclamation, 2020, you have a list of courses and/or subjects on page one eighty-seven of your board book in the summary. So this adoption particularly covers English one through four, reading one through three, creative writing, communication applications, debate one through three, journalism, photojournalism, advanced journalism, yearbook one, two, and three, newspaper one, two, and three, and then English language arts for grade seven and eight, specifically for our ELL students, as well as a class called English Language Development and Acquisition. So this is a very similar process to what we did last year for our K through eight ELAR, or English Language Arts and Reading Adoption, where I brought to you the approved list from the State Board of Education that say these materials are adoptable. And so you have the first list, and then you have a second list that delineates if it wasn't, if the textbook company or the vendor does not, if the materials do not contain a hundred percent of the text, that second document tells us the vendors and which tech that it doesn't address. What this does is it allows us flexibility, or our teachers the flexibility, to have the option, and we're not narrowing the focus for them. So we do have a committee, and myself and Marley Shepherd, who is in the Teaching and Learning Department, as well as Ms. Betsy Tucker at the high school, working very collaboratively together to make sure we select the appropriate books. I know we had one textbook vendor in-house on Wednesday. There is a Region Seven textbook fair on, I believe it's February the fourth, that some teachers that we've discussed will attend, as well as one in Tyler. So for the future meetings, so we're going to go through this process this spring, and then we'll likely bring a recommendation, as well as a proposed recommendation for which textbook vendor has been awarded with requisition, probably in May, is our, is my goal.
The question I have, the materials that are adopted by the, the State School Board of Education, is there room for you to add anything that might be beneficial to our students? Or do you have to follow that strictly?
No, sir. You know, they, they really opened it up several years ago, and allowed us to really purchase whatever we feel is necessary, and so we use this as a guideline.
Board, any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Yes, sir.
We continue with you, federal funding instruction material vendors at this time.
Yes, sir. So I'm on page two hundred and two, on the action sheet specifically. And so because of EDGAR, and I've spelled it out in the summary, which is EDGAR is the acronym for Education Department General Administrative Regulations. And so we're following these regulations set by the federal government, that when we receive federal funds, and of course, we use our federal funds for a sundry amount of things, meaning for salaries, instructional materials, staff development, and/or contracted services. And so this particular request for proposal that we've gone out for is specifically delineated for instructional resources. And so anytime we, and we call that a commodity code, according to EDGAR, not to get too, too technical, but you have to do an aggregate cost of any time that it's over fifty thousand, that we think we're going to spend more than fifty thousand on instructional materials, then we have to go out for the RFP process. You'll notice that the dead, the dates for this extend beyond like our fiscal year, and that's because with the grants, their fiscal year is different than ours. So it begins on October one and ends on September thirtieth. So this particular RFP will be in effect through the beginning of next year. And so what you'll see us do is, is come back in the summer with another RFP that will encompass all of the 2021 school year. Does that make sense? Okay. And so this particular RF, this vendor list is highlighted by a pink tab on, on, on paper. And so we condensed it to one sheet, two columns, and you'll see about the first column and about half of the second column, those are the vendors that we would like to make eligible for us to purchase instructional materials using federal funds. That's about midway through. On the second column, you'll see that acceptance pending SAM registration. SAM is a government website, and we have to go on and look to see if the entity is registered with them, and what we're looking for is if there's any disbarment or suspensions. And so at the time of the RFP, and Ms. Barbick, I've confirmed with her, Ms. Barbick has confirmed SAM.gov, and has, has made it clear that the entity or the vendor didn't have to have registered with SAM during that process of the RFP, because we're very clear on when the RFP deadline ends, and it was January the sixth, I believe, by four PM. They didn't have to be registered for ISAM, but we have to make sure that they are in fact registered, and there's no suspensions and debarment for us to do business with them. And then that last section are the vendors that we are not looking at awarding, or at least the opportunity to purchase from.
Now, given that?
Of course.
Now, this list, can it be deviated from once you do the RFP? So if you have another entity that would be willing, do you, can you go back and do another RFP? So we're stuck with these vendors, well, not stuck, but these are the vendors that we can utilize?
Yes, sir. And we've done, for, for federal funds. Thank you. For federal fund expenditures. Now, that doesn't mean that we can't order from a general fund. And we, like I said, we've gone through this process where we've brought to you either other instructional materials that we've purchased from, and, and we have to stick very closely to it. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Thank you, Board. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda, adoption of an order, notice call of Board of Trustees election for a launch, District Two, District Three in place is on May the second, 2010. Mr. Frady?
This is just the coordination of, of the upcoming election. We'll have three positions up for our election, and this just kind of gets that, once you approve, this, this gets the ballgame going.
Thank you, Ms. Frady. Boy, we're moving down to discussion and action agenda, if you will. Give you a few minutes to fall down. And for the audience, in just a minute, come on, come on, Mr. LaRue. I want to share with you that the camera in the back, in a minute, we're going to show some, use the camera at the front. The camera in the back was damaged this past week by some lightning, and so we're working to get that done. We'll have it done by next, Thursday. We'll have it done by next Thursday. But in the meantime, you may want to move a little closer to the front, in just a minute, when we begin to show the screen, it'll be up here on the front stage. So at this time, we're going to talk about HVAC replacement at TJR Elementary School, and we're going to start, Mr. LaRue, we turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, President Neal. Board members, interim superintendent. You have before you item 4A, page 209, TJRHVAC replacement of the refrigeration equipment or the air conditioning equipment, all in the rooftop units at a price of 1.25. Any questions I can answer, or David is here from PB&amp;K to answer any questions we can answer for you?
Mr. LaRue, will you talk about your timeline, proposed timeline, and the number of units that you would be?
Twelve units. It'll be replaced. The vendor assures us, the equipment vendor assures us that they can deliver the equipment at the 1st of June. That will be critical. If they cannot fulfill that, this project can't move forward. We'll start the 1st of June, pull the units off the roof, and put the new units on. It involves new controls, new boilers. It's a complete HVAC overhaul. We expect to have that done by late summer.
One of the trustees had a question regarding indoor air quality, just across the board. I know that this process does help clear out the vents and ventilation systems, or does improve the air quality in our classrooms, correct?
Yeah, of course, you're stepping up the new equipment and better equipment, better filtration, better air handlers.
And this is part of the bond?
It's part of the bond.
Finding part of the bond issue.
When you say part of the bond, that total amount is from the bond, or is that...
Yes. That total amount is from the bond, is recommended to come from the bond. However, it goes, I'm sure you all are aware that the bond price for that project was 935,000.
Boy, any other questions?
I was looking at page 2 of this, where it's from PB&amp;K. It talked about two costs, it talked about a soft cost of 160,800, and then the total project cost is 1250. That soft cost is figured into that price, 1250?
Right. Everything is included in the total project cost of 1,250,000.
Boy, any other questions? Boy, are there any objections to moving this item to the consent agenda? Thank you. We'll move it to consent agenda. Next item, Mr. LaRue, while you're there, the new district support center design approval and proposal.
I'll have Army, if you'll come forward. The next item is 4B, page 213. As you're aware, the electronic version is up there. Army will speak to this project, walk you through it.
You all are welcome to move forward, so you'll be able to see it if you need to. Thank you. All right? Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Neal, ladies and gentlemen of the board, and Superintendent Fraley. I'm here today to show you the proposal for the final design of the district support center at the old Burke Center that was purchased. And I just want to kind of step you through our design. If everything is acceptable, we were also looking for a proposal to move ahead into construction, to finish, I'm sorry, the construction documents and take this project out to bid.
We walked you all through this, and this is, the only one that was pending kind of was the curriculum area, and we have that mapped out now. There's a lot of moving parts over there. So we're very excited about what Mr. Curtis is proposing to us.
So what you see in front of you is a color-coded plan that delineates the different departments that were created throughout the existing building. And if you allow me, this arrow right here is the main public entry to the building. It feeds into a lobby area and a reception area. The different colors, curriculum is being housed in this kind of light purple area. On the other side of them, a little darker purple is HR department here. As you come down that hallway and get into the kind of winged area of the building, you have communications in yellow, admin in this maroon, and the business office down here in the light blue. There are also these faint blue areas you see. These are all workrooms, conference areas, and they're distributed around the building in different areas so that, in most cases, you'll have a direct access from any given department. But obviously, within the same building, the departments can intermingle if they need to, or some other type of conferencing that may have to happen. There is a training center area here. It's about 750 square feet. It is meant to be a flexible area that can be arranged in different styles, depending on what activity goes on in there. All of these conference and work areas will have AV capabilities. We're also proposing a writable wall on one side. It's kind of a presentation wall. You can literally get up there with your markers, have brainstorming sessions, whatever the case might be. It can be left there, it can be erased, and I think it's a good flexible feature that you'll find that staff can use as a tool for what they're doing. Next, please.
Army, there's a remote up there, if you'd rather do that. The on-off button is on the side.
I had a question on this.
Yes.
What is the security protocol coming in the front door? And is it up to the highest standard that's acceptable for statewide?
There is a kind of a double foyer that's a part of the building. You know, this building was a secured facility out of necessity, given its prior use. Part of the scope of what we're doing is access control to all exterior doors. So there's a standard that's going to be created for whether staff is accessing it or whether the public uses it. I don't have all of the details of how that access system works at this point, because a lot of time, it depends on the vendor being used. So in conjunction with the IT department and with facilities, we're trying to come up with that final answer, as far as how security is handled. But for the most part, people will be received in that front lobby. Now, that lobby also then has locked doors to the rest of the facility, so...
How about the very first door, the outside door? Isn't McMichael's, isn't the outside door locked with a camera? That you come down the hall, and then they're secure at that point?
Mr. President, if I could, we typically don't discuss security in the public for security purposes.
Okay.
So anything that very specifically, we do that really outside the public.
Yeah. There's going to be some decisions made, honestly, about final capabilities there. But it also needs to be a practical aspect. The building has multiple layers of access.
Okay.
So, and especially in this case, you might find yourself being able to get into the lobby relatively easy, but past that point is another issue.
Right.
Where you would need control, you know, somebody's permission to keep moving through the building. I think it's envisioned that if, say, a parent comes and needs to meet with somebody on staff, they may not necessarily be brought into a department. There is a small little conference room right there where staff can then come up to the front, and so somebody's not meandering through the building necessarily. Now, if there was some other special condition, special appointment, then they could be met up here at the lobby and brought back to an office, or whatever the case might be.
Great. Thank you. That last part was really helpful.
Yeah, sure.
Board, we're being asked to consider the design and then later proposal, so just share that with you.
I think our work explained very detailed last time. We all went visit with Mr. Fraley, explained to, very, very detailed how it works.
These are just some larger images of the two sides of the building. One thing I'd like to point out, and it's going to come up in the later sketch, is this area right here, that's kind of an intersection of circulation areas to the different wings. When we went through it the first time, as it exists right now, that's the nursing station area, but it has direct access down to all corridors here, leading in all directions. We're kind of calling, designating that a spirit lobby, if you will, and you'll see why in a second. This is just the other side at the moment, just again, giving a bigger picture of the different areas. On this side, too, I wanted to point out, there is a reconfigured area here as a larger staff break room. It's pretty good size. It'll have sinks, refrigerators, ice access, and the ability to congregate there, to, you know, wanted to get out of your office to eat lunch, but didn't have to leave the building necessarily. There'll also be some breakout areas to the outside here, kind of redefining this plaza area, as we have this, probably will be the staff parking lot on that west side, with, again, controlled access for staff coming off of that parking lot. This is an image of the new public entry side, so this is coming from the east parking lot. We're looking at cleaning all of the face brick, redoing the little roofed areas here that are slanted. It's got that, you know, clay tile on it right now. That's all going to be taken off, proposing to put a standing seam roof back over it, kind of long-term maintenance. But also, in addition to this yellow accent painted stripe that is on, that has brick there now as an accent stripe, it's that terracotta color right now, trying to get the school colors back into and make this building a little more recognizable as a district building. We're also adding the signage here. It'll be backlit lettering so that it's, you can also see it at night. We're replacing all of the sight lighting outside, so all the pole lights that are on there, including the ones leading down that driveway back to the loop, all being replaced with new LED fixtures. We'll be going in and cleaning up the landscaping, generally trying to bring the whole property back up to speed. And this is a concept image of that spirit library, I mean, I'm sorry, spirit lobby. Thank you. It's basically, again, the intersection of the wings of the building. So people are going to be coming back and forth through this area especially. Here's an example of that, that writable board. It also has a magnetized backing, and I was talking with the vendor of this product, and it's used a lot in schools. They, he saw an example of one where in an administration setting like this, they had children come in at the beginning of the year to be able to either post or write goals for the year, and then made a presentation out of it at the end of the year, bringing them back and saying, this is how they met their goals, or what they learned in, to get to those goals. All of these boards, we are able to put images on, and so the idea is to have the Nakadotus ISD logo on it, and that would be in each of those other conference rooms, too. And you can kind of see it in the background, that's a conference room in the back off of the spirit library. As we go through the building, all new flooring, all new ceilings, all new lighting, either repainting or otherwise, changing up the walls, finishes. We are working with a vendor that will, has a special wrap, it's kind of a heavy-duty vinyl wrap for all the doors, because the doors are in otherwise good shape, but they're not necessarily matched all the way across the facility. This will be a chance to consolidate all of them, so they all look new and as one. Replacing all the hardware, of course, as well as we're doing that. And then in this lobby, too, what you're seeing here is kind of a backlit luminous ceiling element with the Dragon logo on it, and the ability to set up furnishings as a meeting area, or as an impromptu breakout area. Again, just trying to stay flexible for the uses of the building. And that's all I have at the moment to present.
Mr. President, be good to point out again, just another piece of this, is that, we make, should we get some before and after pictures?
Definitely. We'll have to do a collage, and it's always neat to do the before and after. I think you'll see a big difference as how the building gets transformed.
And previously, we had discussed any professional development building that would include any board meeting spaces as well. That's kind of on hold because of the pricing of that right now, and so we thought that we would look at getting this done now, renovations. And I'm going to have another idea about professional development space that I'll be sharing with you all, as Mr. LaRue gets a little nervous about my being creative again. But we'll have that for you guys to consider as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Boy, any other? Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Boy, are there any objections to moving this item to the consent agenda, it's just for approval of design and proposal? Thank you. We'll move consent agenda. Item C, consideration, we're scheduling the February, March, and April board meetings, and we're going to turn it over to Mr. Fraley.
Well, this is, again, just in response to the work you all are undergoing right now, as we try to accommodate the search process. So you'll see that the dates that are listed in your board materials identifies what we're looking at doing and why we're looking at doing it that way. In March, because of spring break, we're moving them forward a little a week, and you see the general reviews dates there. April also impact our bad weather days, but trying to keep the back proceedings board meeting date, you know, with the general review there as well. So coming down to, kind of moving it later in April. Let's see what else is there. So the second page, it has administrative recommendations about the February board meeting, being February 27th, March, March 26th, and then April, April 23rd. And you may have discussion meetings thrown in there as you undergo the search process.
Boy, at this time, y'all, it's a great schedule for me, but y'all look at the schedule special notes and have commitments on your work sites. Any questions or concerns, Mr. Fraley?
Just with the April, the April board meeting?
The last week, the 20th and 23rd?
The April board meeting?
Yes. That's, if I'm right, Mr. Fraley?
You have some options there, either...
9, 16, 20, and 23.
So it might be good to leave this on action, not move to consent, so board members can have a chance to look at it in interim.
Well, that's a national holiday, the 16th.
April?
Yes.
It's not my birthday.
It's my birthday.
I was going to say, it's not shown on my calendar.
You can have birthday cake and you can sing to him, right?
So, boy, if you will, we'll leave that on action, we'll give you a chance to consider it, and we'll consider that next Thursday. Boy, any other? The board will not conduct an executive closed session to discuss the item posted on our agenda pursuant to the following provisions of Texas Open Meeting Act and as allowed by Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, and 551.129. No voting will take place in a closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion and closed session will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. It is now 12:55. Thanks, boy. Oh, my hemorrhage. I was waiting.
You guys all right?
Yeah.
We're just trying to get that.
Thank you.
The board is now reconvening in open session at 1:52 PM. The board has adjourned requests for future agenda items. Or adjourned requests for future agenda items. So we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of "a"?
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn. Thank you, board. Thank you very much.